Show nine fifty-nine, so.
Yep, I got nine fifty-nine, too.
Again, the wall clock, yeah.
Oh, I just turned to ten now, so whatever.
Like to call the Tuesday, September fifteenth, meeting of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners, in order please stand for the pledge and remain standing for a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. We seek blessings for our efforts with your clear insight, our deliberations with your wisdom, and our decisions with your clarity, accuracy, and impartiality. Help us to grow closer as a group and our community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make our decisions. Continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
All right, also, let's take a quick moment to wish Commissioner Fleming a happy twenty-seventh birthday.
Yeah, twenty. Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Yes, today is my birthday.
Andy, you hit me to it, but I thought she was only twenty-two.
Well, you know, see, you're a better judge of age than I am, Dave.
Thank you, my new glasses.
All right, moving on, the first outing, uh, first item on the agenda is opening and reading of bids. Infrastructure planning and growth RS nine two zero zero one S miscellaneous resurfacing rehabilitation on various roads in districts one, two, and three.
Good morning, Jessica Clark, county engineer, Department of Urban Strategy and Planning and Growth, on the seventh and eleventh floors. We received two bids, Reeve Riley, South Bend, Indiana, two million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-two cents, survey bid, and Walsh and Kelly of South Bend, two million, sixty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Was there any bids submitted that I did not read aloud? Hearing none, I would recommend the board accept these bids and then we will return to award them later on in the meeting under our section of the agenda.
Any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, Madam Engineer, do you think you have adequate time in this meeting to review those bids and have a good answer in fifteen minutes?
Basically, what we're looking to do is we're gonna recommend that it's subject to review to check matters based on the, uh, the base bid and the major invasions.
And I'm gonna guess that's to help expedite matters because of the COVID and the virus and the weather. We only have so big of a construction season before, in fact, winter's coming closely where they need to shut off their asphalt machines, so, thank you for that. As long as, if you're comfortable, subject to that, I think the rest of us probably are comfortable.
If there are no more questions, is there a motion?
A motion to at least accept these bids and review them now.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Next, moving on to reports and requests, first item is the accounts payable bucket, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next item, appointment to the Portage Manor Board of Directors.
In the past, you know, I've often said with appointments, it'd be nice if we advertised them and so that more people could apply. Apparently, I have received one request from Charles Leoni, who's a wonderful, well-known person. It'd be nice to get, you know, more young people involved in government, but, uh, he has applied and he has requested, so I guess I'll nominate Chuck Leoni.
I guess, so I will now open up nominations, we have a nomination for Chuck. Is, um, are there any other nominations? I will close the nominations, all those in favor of appointing Chuck, oh, I'm sorry, Charles Leoni to the Portage Manor Board of Directors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, Chuck will be, begin a four-year term that will end September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Next item on the agenda is appointment to the Union Township Advisory Board, and I will now open up nominations.
Uh, like. If I may, but again, kind of my same comments the last time, it'd be nice if, you know, we'd advertise for more people to get involved, but Kelly, is it Carrerio, Carrico?
Carrico.
Carrico has applied, and it would be, again, it would be nice to advertise and get more people involved, but she has applies and with the pandemic, I guess, to expedite matter, I'll go ahead and nominate her.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a second for that nomination?
There is, I second that.
All right, are there any other nominations? I will now close the nomination, do a motion is second, all those in favor of appointing Kelly Carrico to the Union Township Advisory Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, and I will note, this, this came to the Board of Commissioners because the party failed to make the nomination, and to take care of that for a couple of reasons, that's why we took that.
Hi, this is Bill. Welcome, Bill. How are you?
All right, moving on to the two thousand twenty-one holiday schedule. I will note, since it's a non-election year, we have a couple of non-traditional holidays on there to meet our, our normal quota of paid holidays for county employees.
Mr. Shaly, open the mute button, please. Sorry about that, Andy.
Are there any questions or comments related to the holiday schedule?
Uh, yeah, I did wanna make some comments, and yes, we do have this problem every four years where we, we don't have two election days, so then we have these two floating days. But again, we've lost Columbus Day, you know, and, uh, and I see that in this new agenda, it's we're gonna have some four-day weekends, which are nice, but, uh, I think it takes away from the concept of holidays and celebrating. And also, you know, we have the pandemic of the virus, but there's also a pandemic of thought police running around in the media or protesting, saying that it's wrong to respect people who have done good things in their history, such as Columbus, um, you know, or, you know, uh, Thomas Jefferson or other people that have made real imprints on this society, and like most people, they were human, and they've made mistakes, but revisionist, rewriting history does not help the society. Usually, only terrible people do things like that, like Pol Pot, Hitler, uh, Robespierre. Mr. Shaly, did you hit me? Mr. Shal, hello? Thank you.
That's somebody else, huh?
Yeah, so, like, people like Robespierre, Pol Pot rewrite history. I, I think it's important that we not be sucked up in the, the, the hyper hysteria, this pandemic of, of thought police and political correctness, and there are many other wonderful holidays we could choose. You know, for thousands of years, they've been, this Friday is Rosh Hashanah, maybe we could have that day. Our Yom Kippur for thousands of years have been celebrated, Chinese New Year, with most of the world being Chinese, and with our low wages the county pays, we have a, a large number of working mothers here. What about Mother's Day Monday off? Our last Friday was Patriot Day, and then there's Holocaust Remembrance Day, besides Columbus Day, or, you know, the National Holiday of, of Casimir Polaski, where General Polaski and Thaddeus Kusjusko came here from Poland with the French troops and helped liberate this country and make this country. So, I just think there's better, it shouldn't just be a day off that's convenient or makes a four-day weekend. I think it ought to be that we are taking time to reflect and honor great things, and that we'd not fall into this pandemic of revisionism and, and, and spacking away from important things like Columbus or Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur Day remembrance, and Casimir Polaski, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the two thousand twenty-one holiday schedule.
Second, we have a motion in second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes two to one. I will also note that the holiday schedule is passed around a few weeks prior to us taking action, and any commissioner is more than welcome to give their input after, if different days would be appropriate, so.
And I share my concerns with staff.
Moving on, we have a DLZ agreement regarding building assessment related to CARES Act.
Thank you, Commissioner Castelmi, um, before you this morning is an agreement for professional services with DLZ. By this agreement, DLZ will conduct an assessment, a facilities assessment, of St. Joseph County existing buildings to, as perform an analysis of their, um, safety under COVID. The assessment will be structured similar to the jails' assessment, using the Occupational Safety and Health Administration's guidance on preparing workplaces for COVID-nineteen, uh, safety. The project will be developed as a planning guide to help county leaders identify the existing conditions in these properties, determine their potential risk levels to employees and to the public, and to determine if any appropriate control measures and/or renovations need to be made to those buildings or their systems that would be beneficial to our employees of the county as well as invitees to these facilities. As also, as part of the, the work and scope, DLZ will develop anticipated probable construction costs to implement any identified corrective actions. So, this is really to promote the safety and security of our employees and invitees to our buildings due to the COVID pandemic. This facility, this facility assessment will be done in a systematic manner. DLZ will prioritize the buildings to be inspected as either Group A, Group B, or Group C. Group eight buildings are those that involve a high level of public interaction. As a result, Group A buildings will be addressed first. Group B buildings, um, have a lesser, um, usage with the public and will be identified or be analyzed second, and then Group C buildings will be looked at after Group A and B buildings are complete. Your Group A buildings are, like this building here, your courthouses, the law building in Portage Manor. Group B buildings are some of your warehouses, the nine-one-one dispatch center, um, the jail, which DLZ has already been in, and then Group C, um, really relates to your highway garages. So, there's a systematic approach that DLZ will use to perform this analysis. This will also be a timely analysis, you can see that DLZ tends or has agreed to provide deliverables by the end of the year relative to their assessment. This will obviously require some, some very, uh, very detailed work by county leaders, too. We will need individuals at these buildings to make sure they're, they're open and available to representatives of DLZ, as well as we'll probably need some, some assistance from Brian Davidson, his experience in the, in the buildings, pointing out systems or things that he's aware of to representatives of DLZ and performing walkthroughs with them. So, in total, they'll review eighteen county-owned properties or county-operated facilities which contain approximately one million square feet located on approximately fifty floors. So, this will be a timely study and also a very thorough study. It's the intent to take this, um, this agreement and, um, have it reviewed by the state, to have it pre-approved for reimbursement through the CARES Act. We think that falls squarely within the, the, the use of CARES Act money as is helping stop the spread of COVID in St. Joseph County. The total anticipated cost of this project is quoted at one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It is actually a time and material contract, there's an Exhibit A that has an hourly rate that will be charged by representatives of DLZ, but to their best efforts, they, they looked at what the work might entail and came up with that fee as a, an estimate to give us an idea as to what total cost might look like. From speaking with representatives of DLZ, this will also be something that if they identify issues that are early on common in their analysis, such as touch of sinks or items like that, these, they'll, they'll advise us and we can maybe have that work completed before the end of the year so we can make sure that our CARES Act money is being used, um, prior to the, what exists now is the cutoff for, um, using CARES Act dollars, which expires at the end of the year. I guess we're all hopeful that CARES Act dollars will be able to be expended after the end of the year and that it will go over to two thousand twenty-one. There's been discussions like that, but nothing formal yet, but regardless, this study will position the county in such a way that leaders can make decisions as to use of CARES Act money or other monies in two thousand twenty-one to promote the safety of the, of our workforce as well as invitees in the buildings due to the COVID pandemic. I'm happy to answer legal questions, I know that representatives of DLZ are on the line and they'd be probably happy to answer any technical questions you would have regarding the agreement, but I appreciate the opportunity to present it to you this morning.
Thank you, Jamie, I also wanna thank Jamie Woods, um, for just his incredible effort and attention to detail in driving this project, and Brian Davidson and Helen for helping kind of move from a county facility standpoint, and of course, DLZ, this is, um, a very time-sensitive issue and a very robust issue, so I truly appreciate all, everyone's efforts up to this point. So, are there any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, certainly, of course, I would like to join in your thanking of and praise of Counselor Woods for working hard with, you know, Brian and Helen, uh, who in my church, we still call Elaine, our organist, and, uh, DLZ for this, this huge task that you're taking over. And like comments I made a few weeks ago on a similar issue regarding the jail that, uh, Counselor referenced in his dissertation, uh, I normally don't support or a big fan of, you know, no-bid contracts, but, uh, DLZ is a much-respected local firm employing hundreds of people, feeding hundreds of families, and has great local intimate knowledge of our buildings and our facilities and our staff to expedite this, and the small time window we're allowed with the CARES Act to, to maximize CARES Act dollars of benefits and help identify, you know, needed repairs and issues and rate them that we'd have to deal with one day or another. But here with the CARES Act money, it's, uh, it's great that we're moving forward again. Thank you, Counselor, and DLZ for doing this. Uh, I just wanna make sure when I looked at the list, uh, I didn't see county parks buildings anywhere. And I know, uh, you know, we have, you know, the sewer plant, solid waste building possibly, and, uh, and then the health wing building, you know, so, uh, I wanna make sure that, you know, we, you're doing a great job, and I'm just gonna say plus that, maximize it and make it bigger and better. Thank you.
We can certainly work with DLZ, um, on any addendums that need to be entered into relative to additional properties that the, the county would like to have looked at as well. You know, we, DLZ is flexible, we've had discussions about working on the scope of the project after it's led, if we can move through certain buildings faster and maybe use resources elsewhere.
And again, that's a great benefit of having a local firm that doesn't have to travel from out of town and can be here in a phone call, and they already know the building intimately. And not just the physical structure, but they know the wiring, where the phone lines are, where the water lines are, to make their relationship with, you know, Elaine and Brian go even faster.
Awesome, any other questions or comments?
Andy, just maybe one additional comment, I think that it's good that you're hiring a design professional firm. You know, when COVID hit in March, um, it's, it's tough to get your arms around, um, best practices, but through working with the governmental agencies, it's always the design professionals like DLZ that come up with these solutions to big problems in the world dealing with physical structure issues. I've seen in the school safety setting, especially after the Newtown tragedy, um, just from my experience, I'm the owner of PHM School Board, you work with design professionals, you take buildings that weren't built ideally for a certain security or safety purview, you have design professionals, they come in, they assist, and they, they give you all these good ideas based upon best practices they developed in response to a tragedy, and I think that's similar to what, what's happened here with DLZ and the folks from Mosha, they've, they've really taken a hard look at this over the last several months, and to engage DLZ now seems to be a very appropriate thing to do just from a risk management perspective as your county attorney.
I.
Awesome.
I agree with all that, it was awesome. Kim, are you gonna make any comments? Cause I talked with Kim about it because we have our security guy, Bob, and he's been actually assessing the health of, so anyway, Kim's gonna make a comment, too. Thanks, Kim.
Good morning, Kim Parks, Human Resource Director, St. Joseph County, offices on seventh floor. I just wanted, as the commissioners review for the agreement, um, we just have our safety risk manager, Bob, Robert Eery, who has met with each department for concerns and addresses, um, and would offer him as the person that DLZ can go to to kind of help lead them through the county in working with both, um, maintenance and the different departments, contact. So, we wanted to make that offer, um, as he's already been in there helping with numerous issues.
And I think that would be good to make sure that it's coordinated with the security, Bob, so that we can make sure that things are, you know, moving in the right direction, working together, cause I like to work together, too, but yeah.
Thank you, Kim.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion?
A motion to approve the DLZ agreement regarding building assessment related to the CARES Act.
Second.
We have motion is second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next move to bills passed by the St. Joseph County Council. At a public hearing held on September eighth and September ninth, two thousand twenty, the St. Joseph County Council passed the following, um, the first five ordinances are establishing salary number of employees, ordinance five-six-two-zero from the coroner, ordinance five-seven-two-zero from the auditor and commissioners, ordinance five-eight-two-zero from the health department, ordinance five-nine-two-zero and six-zero-two-zero from the juvenile justice center, and then ordinance six-one-two-zero, which was the monthly transfers and appropriations. Are there any questions or comments regarding any of these items?
Uh, yes, I have no objection to one vote covering all six ordinances.
That's what I was gonna suggest, too, so, yeah.
You have no objection either?
If there are no questions or additional questions or comments, is there a motion?
Motion to approve all these ordinances, uh, should I list them all? Fifty-six dash twenty, fifty-eight dash twenty, fifty-nine dash twenty, sixty dash twenty, sixty-one dash twenty, let's.
And fifty-seven twenty.
Oh, did I say fifty-seven?
You skipped it, so nice to say.
Fifty-seven.
Maybe you don't like ABC.
Sorry.
Second.
We have a motion is second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Moving on, the health department requests approval to apply for a grant from the Indiana Department of Health.
Good morning, Amy Rupe, Finance Manager for the Department of Health with offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the county city building. We are requesting support to apply for a grant from the Indiana State Department of Health to be able to partner with the two hospitals in St. Joseph County to expand testing capacity related to COVID-nineteen.
Thank you, Amy, this is another great effort by our health department to, um, expand services, especially related to COVID-nineteen, to our citizens, are there any questions or comments?
Uh, as you said, it's great, it's, uh, three hundred thousand dollars that they help with testing, and health, please stay on the phone, cause I'm gonna ask you questions in the next issue, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this grant for the Indiana Health Department.
Second.
We have motion is second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. All right, moving on, infrastructure planning and growth. We have the consent agenda, and for some reason, I can't find my copy of the consent agenda. Oh, here it is. We have a... Well, maybe.
May I, Andy?
Do you want, yeah.
Certainly, please, yeah.
I was gonna say, I could.
On a consent agenda, we just have one item, a block party for the Streamwood Villas, uh, block party. Uh, it's been approved by various departments, and it, and there's a request from engineering that we approve it, subject to the county guidelines. And the reason I asked help to stay online is, they, they're not normally a signature to request for parades and parties, et cetera, but with this virus, I would like them to comment. The health department, uh, is a block party, it's open air, it's in fresh air. Do you have any regulations on that? Are you gonna make regulations on that because of the virus? Is there anything you would like, health department, like to say regarding block parties or parades, et cetera?
Um, again, this is Amy Rupe, um, Finance Manager for the Department of Health with offices on the eighth and ninth floor. If you, um, would like for me to try to get in touch with Bob, our health officer, to see if you would like to speak on this, I don't have any, I guess, information to, um, give towards this, but I'm willing to get Bob, if he's available, to speak on this.
Okay, if it's, if no other commissioner objects, can we just, uh, move this, table this to the end of the agenda, and then maybe she'll get Bob on the phone? Is that okay?
That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll hold off on the consent agenda, then that, moving on to request approval of bid award for RS nine-two-zero-zero-one-dash-S miscellaneous resurfacing rehabilitation on various roads of District one, two, and three, Ms. Clark.
Thank you, Jessica Clark, Department of Urban Strategy and Planning and Growth, offices on the seven and eleventh floors. Based on the two bids received from Reeve Riley and Walsh and Kelly, at this time, we would recommend that the Board of Commissioners accept Walsh and Kelly, and the bid at two million, six hundred, or, two million, sixty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents, and the approval would be subject to, again, further review just to verify the, uh, the math is correct, but based on preliminary review, they would be the.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Yes, a motion to approve the miscellaneous resurfacing rehabilitation, um, on the various districts, one, two, and three, with Walsh and Kelly.
Second.
We have motion is second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Moving on to old business, we have an MOU City South Bend regarding parcels of real estate. Is there a motion to, to bring that back to current, or new business?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion is accepted and ready to receive, um, comments and a presentation on this.
Michelle Hethenheimer, seven oh four West Washington, South Bend. Commissioners, if you recall, at one of the last meetings I'm gonna recall then, I, uh, asked Commissioners to do a memorandum of understanding between the county commissioners and the City of South Bend regarding four parcels of real estate being located at ten fifteen Allen, ten eleven Allen, eight twenty-two Blaine, and three fourteen Walnut Street. Over the last several years, uh, the county and the city have, uh, appropriated and transferring properties that were on tax sale, uh, that the county received certificates because they weren't sold at tax sale, and, uh, the city has requested we convey properties over the last several years for the city to, uh, develop those properties and, and do the sort of different things, but the end result getting them back on the cash rolls. This was, uh, several months ago, the county commissioners approved a transfer of, I believe, eighty-two or eighty-four parcels, uh, that most have been completed, and, and then the city came back around and said that they had four additional parcels that they would like to be included in this, uh, process, and that's what this memorandum of understanding was to determine. When I was here last, there was some question, uh, and, uh, a request was made that the City of South Bend send a representative to explain a little bit more about this request, and, uh, we have Pamela Myers from the City of South Bend, who I would ask that the Commissioners recognize to speak to this issue.
Thank you, Mitch, good morning, Pam Meyer, Director of Neighborhoods for the City of South Bend, offices on the fourteenth floor of the building. A question about these particular properties, um, I can share that the, um, the Walnut Street property would be part of our food and dietary master plan and allow us to, um, extend and improve visibility along Walnut Street. The other three properties are located in West Neighborhoods, and as far. And as far as the implementation of the near northwest neighborhood plan that's been adopted. There are residential lots, and you would anticipate that there would be future housing development there. As you know, the city works closely with the near northwest neighborhood and a variety of other nonprofits. And have provided funding, both city and federal, for the construction of housing in that general area. So these requests, like previous ones, are tied to strategic acquisitions related to implementation of established plans. Have you to answer any other questions, if I can?
Hi, Ms. Myers. I've many times publicly commented my firm support for the NNN and in you and your office. And, but maybe you weren't aware of this. Apparently you weren't. You know, in my time as commissioner, you know, I probably donated 600, 800 parcels of land to the City of South Bend in good faith. But recently, we needed just a little strip of land on Douglas Road. So we could expand and improve Douglas Road, the safety, adding extra lane. And the Parks Department of the city required this board to sign a memorandum of understanding that we would donate about $280,000 to the state DNR. And that we donate about $50,000 to the City Parks Department. Which in some ways, I mean, I haven't got enough answers. It seems like extortion. It seems like they thought we needed the land so they could just get whatever they want, and maybe they did. But, you know, the city residents were going to be most impacted and benefited by these Douglas Road project. And the $280,000, some have said, well, maybe that's a requirement of the DNR. Maybe it is and maybe it isn't. But I'm sure the $50,000 to the park was not. So until there's, until I got real positive, 100% answers on both of those figures. I kind of find it hard to donate anything to South Bend when the South Bend is not being receptive, you know? Right off the bat, the county, you know, city budget is $250 million more than the county budget. You guys, with circuit breakers, city residents don't pay the same percentage of property taxes, don't pay the income taxes. And most of the city is a TIF district. So we get very little tax money from the city. But yet we have to do, we supply a lot of services to the city because that's our function and our job. And for the Parks Department to just exploit us like that, and maybe that's the wrong term. But until I got more information, that's going to be the term that sticks. And until I get some answers, or the city apologizes, or maybe I'll apologize, and they return that money, or maybe they won't. I will not support giving the city anything, okay? But I still support you and I support the NNN, but I will not support this or that. Thank you. Because I wanted to stop. I want you to tell, maybe you didn't know and other people in the city don't know what other city departments are doing. And that's another whole other problem for city residents, which I am a city resident. But I can't continue to have this county in the future exploited the way it was on Douglas Road.
Well, please don't make assumptions because I don't know about that or the details of it. Other city people do not know about that. I just am not aware of the details.
Yeah, and I apologize that you were sent here without any foreknowledge. Because again, I'm a fan of yours and I'm a huge fan of the NNN. I've been stating that for years and I always will be. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? So what I'm hearing is that there's a willingness to, that we either continue to hold this or we do not take action until a later point. So counselor, how, what's the best mechanism to attempt to do that?
I would just table this as an item again to be brought up.
Okay. Is, does that motion exist?
Okay, motion to table?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to public comments. Are there any public comments?
We're also waiting on the health department's report.
Oh, you're right.
I was thinking too, yeah.
You're right. My apologies.
For the consent agenda because that's going to be this weekend.
Yep, so I guess, is there someone, was Dr. Bob able to make it or someone else from the health department?
Yeah, Andy, I'm on the, I'm on the phone right now.
Oh, hi, Dr. Bob.
Dr. Bob, do you understand the issue and question?
No, I was just...
Okay. Pardon me, in a nutshell, when citizens want to have a block party or a parade on, they have to ask the board of commissioners for permission. There's a rather extensive form they fill out. They get signed by the Parks Department, or not Parks Department, Emergency Management, Sheriff's Office, the Engineering Department. Various government entities, whether it's city and county, and they have to have proof of insurance. Now, one person that's never been asked to sign these documents is the health department. And with the COVID issue, you know, this request is for a block party, which will be outside. And they do state that they're going to try to practice social distancing. I mean, are you comfortable, as our health director, saying that you recommend going, we can go forward with this? Because they want to celebrate it this weekend, Saturday, September 19th. And, you know, in the future, do you want to be a signer or you want to be aware of these issues? What is your recommendation as our health official?
Well, per Governor Holcomb, any gathering greater than 250 individuals does need to be signed off by the Department of Health at the county level. And so if this block party is anticipating more than 250 individuals in attendance and they do need to run it by the, submit a proposal to the Department of Health and we review all of these and give feedback and authorization. If it's less than 250, then that does not hold. We, of course, would recommend appropriate physical distancing, hand sanitizer, et cetera, as needed. And for an event that's outdoors, as we all know, there's less risk than if it was indoor. So I don't feel strongly about those less than 250. Though we would be happy to review what they're doing and make our recommendations accordingly. If it's greater than 250, then it's mandatory.
Thank you, Dr. Engineer Clark would like to comment.
Yes, and I would recommend that the Senate floor consider this request and grant approval subject to if the event is expected to have greater than 250 attendees. It'd be subject to the health department's approval and we can coordinate with the organization to contact the health department.
Sounds like a great compromise. Don't expect this matter. Thank you. And you were reading our minds.
And I just want to say too that John Antonucci and Sheriff Redmond has approved of this already moving forward.
Well, yeah, and it's interesting because, you know, so many departments have to sign off on these things. But this is a new decade. This is the life of COVID. And we maybe have to expand this. Notice that Jessica, maybe your staff could redesign the form. That says if there's more than 250, have you applied with the health department?
Yeah, that's a good point.
And that could change. The doctor said that's the, Governor Holcomb's current requirement. That could change. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
Well, I give a motion to approve of the memorandum of understanding with the City of, or I'm sorry, no. It's with the consent agenda. That's it. Yeah, I was looking at the wrong thing. Yeah. At the consent agenda, and now we have to do the 250 then?
Yeah, as a, with the addendum that Jessica made.
Yep, 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 yep.
Second.
Yep, the consent agenda.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Now, it's time for public comments.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments?
Yes, yes, there is. Please hold, Commissioner.
Good morning. My name is Eric Bur. I am a resident of San Joe County at 5478 Christie Lane at Osceola. Today I come to talk to you about the road in front of my residence. I have what you've not given the signed edition from members of the neighborhood. And even on September 3rd, we are working as a driver. My family, their life moved into the neighborhood just over seven years ago. And at that time, the following spring, there was a sinkhole that started in front of the end of our road. We have two storm culverts, one at the end of our driveway, right in middle of our driveway. And one that is on the other side of the road, driveway crossroad. Every spring, we would contact the county highway department, asking for sinkhole repairs. Someone would come out. In two to three months after contacting them. Depending on where the sinkhole was, whether it was on our side or the opposite side of the road, we would use our... And then last year, a sinkhole about circumference of a 55 gallon drum appeared on the other side of the road. I made numerous phone calls to county highway, no return phone calls, no one came out. Numerous phone calls to county commissioner's office, no return phone calls. Emails, excuse me, unresponded. And then in August of last year, I was out of town on business and a gentleman from the county highway department by the name of Andy contacted me via phone. He was at my residence at the time, had done a study. Said he was going to dig into it more as to the cause of this, felt erosion was part of it. He would run some sort of a test on our driveway because our driveway, at the end of the driveway, has pumpkin. Probably about two inches. He was worried about erosion uncharted from the storm grain. Never got a test, any test results or anything, as he had said he would get back with me if the erosion under the driveway. I told her last year, I'm not sure if it was county highway or some company came out and actually excavated from storm grain to storm grain across the road. And that filled in with some sort of hard gravel mix, top coated it over, looked like a loose gravel. And over the winter months, the fire truck had dug that out. Basically, what is now known in our neighborhood is a group of, because the difference doesn't involve a rubber stove. I made a few more phone calls, nothing was returned, and at that time I was worn out. I was done with the site. Until a few weeks ago, one of my neighbor's friend's daughter hit this spot. Took a hit in the road.
Took a light in the road, I'm sorry?
Um, biggest persons are both.
Oh, really? Wow.
Fortunately, her injuries were minor, no stitches, no immediate medical attention was needed at that time. I always point person in our neighborhood through this because that issue's always been at the end of our drive, in front of our bed. At that time, my friend came over and said, hey, listen, man, what's going on with this? And I'm like, I'm not sure. I just remember the towel. And I said, well, I'll start, you know, fight the fire again. Didn't go back with it. So I tried to place a call to the insurance office again, nothing was returned. Reached out to Mr. Patel. He came right away, returned my caller head away, came out, looked, sent an email to the county highway department. And things got rolling together. Last week, Tuesday of last week, Andy from the highway department and a project manager came out. Fortunately, I was not there to be with them, but I did talk to them via phone as I was on the road for business again. So my main concern is, one, what is causing this? And Andy feels that he believes that there's an issue with one of my neighbor's two houses to the north of me. And them pumping water from their basement out of their sump pump into the road. Their pipe that comes out of the ground up sits right next to the curb. And in the springtime, pumps so much water out, algae actually builds one or two down the storm grain. It's that much water flow continuously. Andy said he was addressing that with a neighbor and giving them the time to, you know, to fix their drainage on how it properly needed to drain. He did a test on the driveway last week with his project manager. It was found that there are hollow spots underneath our driveway, the secondary. At that time, he told me that I would be receiving an email by week's end of last week with an action plan on how to take care of my driveway and the road in front of me. That email is not received. I do have assigned copies of the petition here for each commissioner, if you would like to choose one. My third item that I have is circled here on the back of the picture. Not a very good picture, but you can kind of see it here. And what this is, is the exact same spot on my side of the road in front of the drain in the area that was excavated. That Andy had told me that they were going to now put concrete surface over and not blacktop. I have an issue with this spot. The spot is now starting to sink beside the quality cannon. I posed this question to Andy on the phone last Tuesday. I was told, don't worry about it. It's no big deal.
What was the name of that street again that you're talking about?
Christie Lane.
Christie Lane?
Yes, District 3. And...
Because I had worked with Andy. I've moved forward and asked him to move forward with it, so I didn't know what this is.
What's that off of?
It's off of Day Road, or I'm sorry, Edison Road, just west of county line.
You know, the water table there is extremely hard, heavy, I mean, very high. And I, although it's not my district, and I got to be honest, I don't recall seeing your name as leaving voice messages for me. And if I did, I would have called you back. And I would think my other commissioners do their best also to do that. There is a pandemic and so, but it sounds like Andy's been working with you for over a year, even last week.
I've been talking.
And I do know some people, I think, on your street that had some problems even getting new septic permits because the water table is so high. Now, from my years on the drainage board, I know that it's illegal for your neighbor to be pumping his water onto our street. And you might have, we might have a civil suit against them, although we generally try not to sue our citizens. We usually just try to take care of it, you know, and not hurt people. But you might have a civil matter, you have to talk to your lawyer friends, where you got a civil matter for him damaging and ruining your driveway. Because if you have to, if you have voids under your driveway, that's your property, your business, you know? And if there's voids there, then he caused it by him flooding you out as he's flooding out the road. Obviously, Madam Engineer's heard this. We've heard this. And granted, it's great to see Andy, we're here, Andy is working on this. He was in the meeting a minute ago. He just darted in and darted out. But, you know, we'll certainly check with Andy.
Yeah.
And Madam Engineer will check for us. And, you know, and I'm sure that your neighbor who's been illegally dumping water has to be given some kind of time window to fix his problem, what he's been doing wrong. You know, it's like he's robbing a bank, so he's instantly arrested. He's giving, he's probably given a respectable amount of time to fix his, what is his issue and stop flooding out our road and apparently your driveway, damaging, undermining your driveway and our road.
Andy said that he was going to be giving the resident at that place two weeks to get this repaired or the county would come in and fix it and build it?
And that's probably by some county ordinance and rules already on the books. Because he's probably not the first bad neighbor that's flooded out another neighbor, okay? And I'm sorry you got choked up, very emotional about the girl having a little car accident. Thank God she wasn't really hurt. And, you know, it's, people got to live together and get along, you know? I don't know, I think the houses there are, you know, they're not 50 years old, right? And see, farmers and people that built houses, they built them in all the good spots, just like New Orleans, okay? So older sections, that's where you want to live and not be flooded out. Anything that's newer, whether it's New Orleans or San Joe County, anything newer is places where they knew not to build for 200 years. So sometimes nice new neighborhoods seem like a wonderful thing, but there's drawbacks. And this is one of them. And again, your other neighbors have contacted me regarding not being, having trouble getting sewage permits. Because again, the high groundwater table, septic systems. Because of the high water table. To live in the city, you get city sewage, so.
Yeah. Thanks for letting us know and, again, because I had been always talking with Andy about things that need to be done and hopefully he followed up with it, so.
He's the most responsible and reliable member of the team.
Yeah.
And after Jessica, you'll check in and keep us informed?
We have a contractor that's interested in working out. I'll coordinate with them.
Okay.
I was on the office.
Yeah.
For the end of last week, so I know they have found on Friday night after the, that I had to talk with them, exactly what their plan was, and I'd like to see the place to look at the, the, the conference, you know, that...
Andy, for your benefit, Jessica said they already have a contractor in place to handle this.
Right.
Yeah, we already have one.
Right. Good. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk.
Glad he's moving in the right direction.
My last, I presented the picture I was talking about. I was told that concrete was gonna go over this. If this is starting to sail again, which is the exact same spot it was sailing last year, I'm just worried that it's going to sail under concrete and no one's going to see it.
Well, we'll address the issues as best as we can and go on from there.
Not an engineer, but they are, they'll do...
And as usual, I'm glad to hear that our engineering department is on it.
Right.
Totally on it.
I agree.
You know?
Hodge Patel, 103, South Esther Street, South Bend. Happy birthday, Commissioner Fleming.
Thank you.
I want to echo what Mr. Burns said. You know, he reached out to me on September 1st about this issue, tired and frustrated and angry. And so that next day, on September 2nd, I went to his home around 6:00 PM over Kingsford Heights, or, sorry, Kingsman Heights, to see what he was talking about. There were some other neighbors that were out doing, he described a situation where that young 10-year-old girl was going on her bicycle and hit that rut and skidded off. It's rough pavement there, right? It's loose gravel where she was injured. Yeah, this has been going on for years, and it hasn't been addressed properly. And so that's why he reached out to me. And it shouldn't take reaching out to someone else to get it done. You know, the elected officials should be addressing this issue and taking care of it.
I've been trying to.
The other thing I want to talk about is, and this is to the District 3 Commissioner, talk about transparency and being financially responsible. Yet, we want to have a debate to talk about issues, whether it's a situation going on with Mr. Burns's neighborhood, or whether it's the finances of the county. You know, you were elected, you were appointed in 2014, elected at a caucus. In 2016, the budget for the county was $115 million. In 2020, that budget was $159 million. That's a $44 million spread right there. And so we think that it's important to have a public discussion. Being here is not having a public discussion, this is more of a one-way public comment opportunity. And I've sat here for weeks and weeks and weeks and months.
Because you don't have a...
And I've heard you say, on several occasions, you want to do the right thing. And I think the right thing to do is to have a public debate. So I encourage you to work with the League of Women Voters and the American Democracy Project to have that debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
No.
All right, hearing or seeing none, or I guess hearing none in my case. A motion to recess is in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Alouds in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Tough luck. We are recessed. Farewell.
So have a good day, Andy. And your Irish wine.